Good evening everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the October sixteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the city of South Fulton. Staff, do you guys want to call roll?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Blackshear. Ms. Patterson.
Present.
Mr. Mathis.
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell. Ms. Piles-Furde. Ms. Jerome.
Present.
Ms. Evans. We have a quorum.
Okay. At this time has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes of last meeting from September eighteenth? If so, I'll take a motion on those minutes or if there needs to be any corrections. Please point those out.
I make a motion and set the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been properly made to accept the minutes of our meeting from September eighteenth and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none of meetings, the minutes from the meeting from September are accepted. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and roll into this month's agenda. And our first case is V two five dash zero zero one six seven two five short road. The staff want to give us a briefing on that?
Yes, V twenty five dash zero one one. The address is sixty two twenty five short road. The applicant is seeking a variance to appendix C zoning table dash four dash one for area regulations for lots of principal buildings for a variance to reduce the size setback from twenty five feet to nineteen feet. Staff is recommending a denial.
Alright, at this time I'll take a motion from the board to open public discussion on V two five dash zero one one.
I move to open discussion, public discussion on V two five dash zero one one.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in public discussion. Are the parties here the applicant for V two five dash zero one one?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to step to the podium please? I state your name and your address, whether you're resident of city of South Fulton and then you're going to have ten minutes to present your case to the board. You have the floor.
My name is Juan Villalobos and my address is sixty seven twenty five short road, Ferbun, Georgia three zero two one three. And I'm trying to reduce from nineteen to twenty five.
You were here last meeting and this case was deferred. Do you want your daughter to come back up as she was last time to assist you with communicating with the board?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
What do you mean? The Georgia? Yeah.
He is a resident.
Go ahead, make your case.
Like, so basically we're trying to get a variance so that we can be able to reduce the sides yard setback from twenty five to nineteen feet on the back of the house.
Do you need your daughter to just translate for you? Is that easier?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we just like this happens to begin his own words and maybe his daughter translate?
She's fine communicating for you. The issue is you need to make your case. Have you said all you wanted to say?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Alright, the staff position remain the same on the issue?
Deny, yes.
Okay, is there anyone here in opposition?
There's no cards in opposition.
Okay, alright, this time I'll take a motion to close the floor for public debate and.
There were none in pro in support of it. No cards at all?
There was only one card and it was for Mr. Juan.
Thank you. I move that we close public discussion on V two five zero one one.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor of closing public discussion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are closing public discussion. So at this point, does anyone on the board have a question of the applicant?
I do.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Villalobos, your neighbor right next door to you at six seven one five short road, Mr. John Wesley Panther. He totally supports what you're doing, correct?
Yes.
He is the only one that will be affected by this six foot relief that you're asking for, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only question I got for you at this time.
Alright, thank you.
Chairman, I do after everybody ever chance to ask him questions, I do have further commentary to add to this.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, I wasn't here last time, but I did have a chance to review the information for this case. And so I have a few questions.
Okay.
So the home has already been completely built, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And so if I can get some clarity from the city please, if this variance isn't granted, what is going to happen? What will be the impact to Mr. Villanobos?
So I think right now they're in the process of getting their final inspections in order to get a CO. So if they don't get the variance relief, they won't get a CO for the home.
Okay, so the home is completely built, but they won't be able to occupy the home?
Literally correct, yes.
Okay, and then what would happen to the home itself? Would it have to be demolished? Would it still stay as is?
If they would like to, I guess, get a CO for the home, they would have to bring the home into compliance with the zoning regulation. So they would have to remove the part that's in the setback.
So is that just like removing a side of the home and bringing it in? Like what does that entail? What would that look like for?
That would be up to, that would be up to the developer and the contractor to bring the home into compliance. We couldn't tell them how to do that. We'll just need to see the home outside, outs, not in the setbacks.
Okay. Okay. So there was the city wrote that there were some language barriers. Do we know if the applicant filled the application out himself or did he receive help or did it come from someone else?
The zoning, the variance application?
Mm-hmm.
I believe he filled it out himself, yes.
And was that filled out appropriately?
Yes.
And the encroachment that's in question was pre-existing, I believe from what I read. There, he built a house, excuse me, he acquired a home. He demolished it. He built another home in the same exact space?
No, they demolished the home, but they built it larger than what the previous home was.
Mm-hmm.
And that's when they built it into the setback.
Oh, they built into the setback?
Correct.
Okay, so the home was in compliance beforehand?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think that the previous home was there from what I've so once she's finished, I want to add commentary to it because I actually, I want to step further with it by speaking with.
I'll defer to you and circle back with my questions.
I spoke with Mr. John Wesley Panther. I literally went out and spoke with him, his wife and her mother. They've been there for fifty, they've been there for a lot of years. They know the whole street. What he explained to me was the old home that was there was seventeen feet from the original setback. It was an older home. When Mr. Villalobos here went to build his new home, he thought he was within the setbacks because he moved it back two feet further than what was original there. That particular gentleman, Mr. John Wesley Panther, he actually came over and spent about twenty five, thirty minutes explaining how he do not have a problem with it, how he love his neighbor. He's glad he got a neighbor like that next door to him. He would like to see this go away. He speak about how his daughter babysits and come back and forth. So they have zero problem with this. And he said actually two feet further than that original house that was there. So that's the commentary I wanted to add to it because the only person who's affected by it would be the gentleman and his wife who is a school teacher educator here in the area at six seven one five short road.
That's the neighbor?
Yes.
I have, please come.
You have floor, Mr. Jerome, go ahead.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. The old house is seventeen feet away from the property line. So I don't know, this is my first house and if you are know, I do it twenty five feet away. And I say I measured, I said seventeen feet or I go in two feet over, it's better and I don't know required twenty five feet and I'm not reading in the plan. And I'm sorry, if you are know, that not happen.
Are you saying that it was in the plans and you didn't see it or it was not in the?
Yeah, and the plan, it show like twenty five feet from the line, but I don't know, that's the distance has to be start building. I don't know.
Okay, and you're, this is not what you do for a living? You've never built a home before?
Well, I do remodeling, but no.
Say that again, you do it?
Remodeling.
Remotely?
Remodeling house.
Oh, remodeling.
Yeah, and no building new house. This is my first house I'm building for me.
Okay, you're accustomed to reading plans and you're accustomed to?
No, no, I'm good to reading plans because I'm doing remodeling and it's not with plans. Yeah, and yeah, I'm sorry. If you are know, that not happen. Yeah.
Okay. Um, so did you make any efforts to find out what the plans required when you were building it? Did you contact the city? Uh, did you have anyone try to help you while you were building before you finished constructing the house? Before you finished building the house? Did you have any help at all? Because the, uh, city did note that there was a language barrier. And, um, I'm trying to find out if you got any help, um, with your building process at all.
No.
No, okay. Another question for the city. Does the city offer any assistance for non-English speakers or Spanish speakers?
Um, so when people apply for permits, it's on them to do all the necessary information that they need to comply with the city ordinances. We don't have any extra services that allow for any, like, language interpretations as this is a private contractor normally who's pulling the permits for it. So we don't get involved in that. It's just, you bring us the application and we deem it, if it's sufficient or not, to move forward.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Patterson, did you have anything?
No questions.
You have anything else, Mr. Johnson?
I did want to just say this, that both of these properties are sitting on pretty large pieces of parcel of land. One of them is about four and a half acres, and Mr. Villalobos' property, it look like it's about four, right, four and a half acres. And Mr. Panther's next door is about three and a half acres. So it's plenty of space there, and the only person that I see would be affected by this would be Panther, who has zero problem with it, with. So that's all I wanted to add to it.
I have an additional question for.
Ms. Jerome, you have the floor?
Thank you so much. Mr. Villanobos?
Yeah.
Hi. So are you clear on what you need to do if you do not receive a variance?
No.
Okay, so from what was explained by, um, Mr. Williams, you would have to bring the setback within twenty-five feet, and right now you're over that line. So that means that the part of the house that is over the setback would have to be removed. Are you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, if I gotta cut, I gotta cut it. If I not have no choice, what are I gonna do?
Because if you don't get the variance, you won't be able to get your occupancy permit to be able to live in the home. Do you understand that?
Okay, I don't know.
Do you have any idea how much it would cost to do that?
No.
Is that something that you're able to do? Okay. Okay, um. I mean, in my opinion, the hardship criteria does allow that, um, a request for variance uh, limited to the extent necessary to alleviate an unnecessary hardship and not as a convenience to the appellant, nor to gain any advantage or interest over similar, similarly zoned properties. Um, in my opinion, fits this criteria. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions of the applicants or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion at this point on V two-five dash zero-one-one.
I'd like to make a motion for D two-five dash zero-one-one that we grant the relief that he's asking for the variance, for the setback to go from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet.
A second, aye.
It's been properly moved in second to grant the variance for V two-five dash zero-one-one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes and your variance is granted. Uh, Mr. Villanobos? Yeah, congratulations, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Alright, moving on, case number two, V two-five dash zero-one-three-three-four-one-five Enon Road. Staff wanna give us a briefing on that?
Yes, this applicant is requesting a deferral to the next ZBA meeting. So I'll just go here to read the case, so they don't have the applicant come up and state the reason as to why they need to deferral. Uh, but they're seeking a floodplain variance to section fourteen dot one-four-zero-one-five A, general standards pursuant to section fourteen dot zero-two-five variance procedures to construct twenty-two multifamily dwellings associated drive hours and parkings to stormwater detention ponds and utility infrastructure in a floodplain. This is in City Council District Two, and the applicant is recommending a deferral.
Okay, uh, the next case, the third case, has the same address, so they are connected. So are we going to defer both?
Correct, but it has to be a separate vote.
Okay, alright, so, uh, everybody's heard that, so, uh, entertain a motion or?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move that, excuse me, you have to do them separately, you said, right? Oh, yes, is the applicant here?
What is staff's position on it?
We originally wrote it up as a denial, but again, it's not, since there's no public hearing, our recommendation is that they defer it, um, per the applicant.
Okay, so we're about on the same page. Uh, does the applicant want to state a case for deferral, or just let us vote on it, or what?
I'll state the case. How you doing, first of all?
Doing well. Please state your name, your address, and whether you are a city of South Fulton resident for us.
Yeah, my name is Fred Hill, and, uh, I own a business down in, uh, on Eden Road, thirty-four fifteen Enon Road, South Fulton Landscape and Nursery. We've been down there for eighteen years, okay? So now what I wanna do is I wanna sell the business and turn the land into something legendary, something that can add value to the community, okay? So we have some issues with the floodplain, but what, what, what we, what we, um. What we decided is that we just, we just acquired a, um, we, we're requesting a sixty-day deferral of our floodplain variance and our stream, uh, streamlined variance. We recently retained some new legal counsel, uh, Henry Baylor, with Clark Hill, who is, uh, has, has some extensive experience working with the city of South Fulton. This additional time will allow us, allow our attorney to get up to speed, okay, on the, on, on the project, review all the materials that have been submitted, and help guide us in the best way to move forward with this variance and rezoning process. So that's the reason why we're requesting, 'cause we just, we just, we had a public hearing, okay, uh, community. A number of people in, in the community came to our public hearing we had at, uh, Santown. And they expressed that, you know, they're in support of it as long as we, we put a quality product in there, okay? But we have to do some, we have to do certain things, and that's why I have our, our civil engineer, Kim Lee Horn, with us, so if you have some technical questions you need to ask, you can, you can address them. But primarily, in order for us to put our best, uh, our best foot forward and our best presentation forward, we, we're requesting a sixty-day deferral.
Okay, well, in light of your request for deferral, I don't think it's gonna be productive for us to go into any details about it. So, uh, at this point, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Pointed clarification, what would be the sixty-day, um, meeting, the date of that sixty-day meeting? It's in December, but I just wanna confirm that we have a meeting.
December eighteenth?
And, and we're, we're having a meeting planned for that day?
Yes.
Okay. Eighteenth?
We do now.
Okay. Alright, I move that we defer the hearing of case V two-five dash zero-one-three to the twelve-eighteen-twenty-twenty-five meeting to allow the newly appointed, uh, attorney time to be brought up to speed on the case.
Second.
Yeah, it's been properly moved in second to defer V two-five dash zero-one-three to our December meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, V two-five dash zero-one-three is deferred. Our next case is V two-five dash zero-one-four, uh, for efficiency, I'll skip our staff introduction and I'll entertain a motion from the board on it as well, since they are connected.
Correct. Um, I move that V two-five dash zero-one-four will be granted, the, uh, sixty, uh, uh, will be move, will be moved, will be heard at the December eighteenth-twenty-twenty-five meeting to allow the newly appointed attorney to be brought up to speed on the case.
A second.
It's been properly moved in second to defer also V two-five dash zero-one-four to our December meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, V two-five dash zero-one-four is deferred also. So at this point, does staff have anything else for us? If not, I will entertain another motion from the board.
Bring it.
Bring it. Ms. McClendon looks like he wants to say something to us.
I just wanna say I appreciate, thank you guys for your time.
Yes, sir, we appreciate you.
Board members, good afternoon, evening. Reggie McClendon, Managing Director of Community Development and Regulatory Affairs. Uh, I wanted to briefly come before you, uh, just to say a couple of things. We're coming up to the end of the year, um, in the end of council terms. Uh, and so, um, I, I always wanna express to you all my gratitude, um, for, um, you serving on this board and serving well, uh, and always being well-prepared to, uh, hear these matters. Next month, um, I think you're going to have something come before you that is probably going to be, um, a, um, the, the first time we've dealt with this, um, as a city, which is an appeal of an administrative decision. Um, I wanna bring it up this month because I want you all to prepare yourselves to hear, um, that type of an action. Um, it, you might wanna familiarize yourself with the, um, with our code section pertaining to appeals of administrative decisions. Uh, it's not going to be quite, um, what you're used to. Uh, and so I might, um, have a conversation with the chair and talk about how we, um, are gonna go through that matter. Um, and so I'd ju- just be prepared that next month you might, I, I don't want y'all to say, wait a minute, what is this? This is new. Uh, so we'll try to get as much information out to you, uh, in advance as possible, uh, but please be prepared for that. And if anybody has any questions, um, our, our phones and emails are always open.
Alright, thank you, Mr. McClendon. Uh, I'll take a motion.
Alright, before we do that, I just want to thank them. I don't know if you guys know, they brought up an issue, uh, Tuesday night where they can make administrative, for the board to vote so they can have administrative authority to grant some of the smaller stuff that we be dealing with in here. Uh, I thought that was a good move myself, and on behalf of Mr. McClendon, Mr. Matt, and, and everybody else who brought that up, I thought that was a good move. They take some of the, take some of the responsibility off of us and have to spend forty-five minutes on something that they can make administrative decision on. So hopefully the board, uh, hopefully our current city council board get on board with that and grant them that relief where they can make those decisions in-house.
Good enough. Still waiting on the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to adjourn our meeting this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, we are adjourned. See you all next month.